Yep.
All right then. Uh, good afternoon. This special meeting of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees now called to order at 4:31 PM. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comments are posted in item one on the agenda. We will ask at each item if there is public comment. Kathryn, can you please do a roll call?
Uh, yes. Um, wait a sec. Now I've got a roll call. We have Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Here.
Uh, Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Deluna.
Here.
Trustee Baldini.
The place I'd rather be, here.
Trustee Iverson. Where did he go?
He was here.
Is he?
Oh, you're muted.
Uh, okay, we'll move forward until he finds it. Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
And Trustee Iverson, are you there? Hmm, okay. Um, might be technical difficulties. And Trustee Baker.
I am here.
All right then. So, adoption of the agenda. If we all agree, we could adopt by consensus. Any changes to the agenda that need to be made? Hearing none, we can adopt that. So then now we have public comment. Uh, this time the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding... Wait, we don't have any closed session, do we? No. No. Oh, I'm so sorry. No, that's all right. Uh, regarding any items on the agenda, uh, not on the agenda, I should say. Hold on, let me get to the right point. Shoot, this public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to listen to concerns, perspectives, and differing advantage points. The board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to listen to community input. At this time, the board will devote up to, a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding the open session agenda item. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comment? Uh, I have received none. We have two members of the public present. Do you, would you like to make comment? All right, hearing, hearing none. So we can move on. So we have one single action item, which is our 2020 to 2021 Napa Valley Community College District Audit Report. And our interim Vice President of Business and Finance and our auditor are both here. So Doug Roberts, sweet Ben, is your show.
Um, yes, board president, trustees, um, members of the public who are here. First of all, I, I want to, to say I'm very pleased that, that we are able to present this, um, audit to you, uh, in time for us to, uh, submit it to the state chancellor's office by the statutory deadline of 12:31. As some of you will, will vividly recall, the, um, last year's audit for 1920 had a material weakness, um, that we did not close on time, that affected our ability to report our CCFS 311 report and our audit on a timely basis. And the fact that the audit was seen as very late, uh, was listed as an item of concern by both the ACCJC and by FICMAT. And I want to, you know, thank our auditors, Ben especially, who will be talking in just a moment, as they worked tireless with, with us, plus, um, key members of, of district staff to get all the documents in. Um, and people worked, well, basically this all came together on the 24th. So there are some very dedicated people, uh, to make this, this audit report happen. And I will leave it up to, to Ben to now go through the audit report. But again, I just want to thank, thank he and his firm, um, for helping us make this happen and prove to ACCJC and FICMAT that yes, indeed, Napa Valley College can get its audits in on time.
Thank you, Doug. It's my pleasure to speak to the results of the audit for fiscal '21. Um, I just want to preface this presentation just by acknowledging and really piggybacking on what Doug was just saying. Um, Doug inherited, uh, kind of a situation where the prior trial balance, the trial balance for 1920 was not actually finalized and closed out until after the end of the next year, after the end of this past year under audit fiscal '21. So to go from that, uh, to not only, um, completing the audit, uh, timely for, for the very next year, but in fact, well in advance of the extended timeline. Um, so here we are on December 30th, in compliance with the traditional December 31st timeline. Um, in acknowledgement of this second year of COVID, the chancellor's office actually entitled districts to go all the way out until February 28th of 2022. So I just want to acknowledge that effort. Um, it's been a tremendous experience working with Doug and Aressa and the entire team at the district. It always has been. Um, but last year was certainly a, a bit more dramatic from the standpoint of timing. And this year, um, we're very pleased to see, um, our requests being provided to us in a, a very quick, uh, and timely fashion, enabling us to complete our procedures, um, and ultimately opine on all of the four sections that were required to, uh, well in advance of that extended date. Um, so I just wanted to, to give perspective to that. Um, and with that, I'll, I'll dive right in. Kathryn, would you like for me to drive the PowerPoint? Or should I provide page number references as I go through?
If you, I, I'm happy if you'd like to do the page number references. I can hop around this document pretty fast, the way we did last time.
That sounds great. Yes, enough for that. Cool. So the, uh, report breaks out, uh, into four auditors' reports. Um, and I'm at a high level going to go through all of the sections, uh, including those four reports, which I'll speak to in a little bit more detail. And I, I just want to emphasize, this will be at a fairly high level, so don't hesitate to stop me if there's anything that you'd like me to speak to in greater detail, uh, whether, uh, with respect to any part of the document or any of our procedures, um, underlying our opinions for, for fiscal '21. Uh, for the first report, which begins right on the first page of the document, so PDF page four, um, we provide our independent auditor's report. And on the very next page, or PDF page five, um, at the very top of that page, we provide our opinion. Um, in this report, which is really our chief work product, we opine on the fairness of the presentation of the overall district financials. And I'm pleased to report tonight that that opinion is unmodified, which is the highest quality opinion that an auditor can render and is to say, based upon the results of our procedures over fiscal '21, the financials contained in this document can absolutely be relied upon, uh, by this governing board, by the district, and all the district stakeholders. Uh, moving past that independent auditor's report, um, the next section, Management's Discussion and Analysis, starts on PDF page eight, or document page four. And that's where the district's administration provides some useful year-over-year analytical information, as well as some forward-looking, uh, budgetary information on the financial position of the district, um, as well as some context over FTES. Um, moving past the MDNA section to the start of the core financials on document page 12 or PDF page 17, um, is where the district begins to present its core financial statements. That first page, the statement of net position, is going to give the ending net position at that snapshot, a fiscal end date of June 30, 2021. And one thing that I always like to give a little bit of context to, um, not that it's really news to any member on this board, I know you're, you're all well informed of this, but when you look to the bottom or the second line up from the very bottom, you see that very significant negative number, that negative 57.657 million of total net position, uh, sometimes that can alarm, um, community members or stakeholders. And I just want to always give context to that, that not only is this on the government-wide, rather than the district's operating basis of accounting, but that's primarily influenced by several fairly recent changes to accounting principle, which require the district to bring on some very significant liabilities. Um, so if we go up just midway on that same page, uh, we can see a little bit of context under the non-current liability section, right in the middle of that page, we see that $54.2 million net pension liability. And underneath it, um, as part of the long-term debt non-current, that $143.9 million balance, there's another $37.3 million baked into that of other post-employment benefits, uh, liability or obligation. Uh, those are two, uh, fairly new liabilities required to be brought on through a change in accounting prin- principle that together sum to over $91 million. Uh, just to put that negative number in context, um, that's not to say that it's not very good for top administrators, um, and the board to be cognizant of those obligations, but just to understand that those are very long-term items in nature, and, uh, they have come on fairly recently as a very major change to the way that governmental, uh, financials were required to be presented, uh, just within the last several years. Um, so I want to give a little context to that. On the very next page, document page 13, PDF 18, uh, we see the statement of activities or revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. One thing I'd like to highlight here, also toward the very bottom of the page, uh, is a prior period adjustment, uh, reference to note 12 for $92,642. We always like to give explanation of any time where the beginning balance is being changed, because that represents, um, something new, uh, from the prior audit. Oftentimes, that can correspond with, uh, corrected misstatement, um, that was identified during the audit or identified by the district. In this case, uh, that is not the case. Um, this is simply an additional change in accounting principle, uh, that affected all government agencies nationwide, um, and required for, um, some of the prior fiduciary funds to be re-categorized as governmental activities. So effectively, that $92,000 had been classed as fiduciary, and now that money is being brought on and shown in the government-wide governmental fund financials. And so that's, that's what's happening there. Moving past the statement of activities, on the very next page, we see, uh, the first page of the statement of cash flows, showing all the cash flow activity for fiscal '21. Uh, the following page, uh, shows the second part of the cash flow statement reconciling the operating loss to, uh, net cash used by operating activities. Um, and then on the subsequent page, PDF 21, we see the remainder of what is left in fiduciary funds. So essentially, GASB 84 requiring for some of that activity and balances to be scooped out and put into governmental funds, um, but leaving us with the district's trust, um, which is still properly classed as fiduciary. And then on the next page, uh, PDF 22, we see the activities relating to, uh, that district trust. And following the fiduciary financials, beginning on PDF 23, we start in on the notes to the financial statements. This is a very significant, uh, very lengthy part of the document that provides additional detail on the balances contained within the core. So everything from, uh, additional information on cash, uh, to capital assets, long-term debt, uh, other post-employment benefits, pensions, is all going to be, uh, provided in greater detail in this section of the document. And as we flip through that, um, we also see, for instance, on PDF page 51, a little bit of additional context on that prior period adjustment, um, indicating that that relates entirely to the adoption of the GASB 84 change in accounting principle. And moving past the notes, we go into the RSI or the Required Supplementary Information, beginning on PDF 53. This is primarily going to provide required schedules that are pertinent, uh, to both the net pension liability and to the other post-employment benefits. So here we see, on the first page of the RSI on PDF 53, uh, we see the schedule of changes in the net OPEB liability. Um, this will eventually become a 10-year schedule. It's going to accumulate information as we move forward in time. Um, and then we see the schedule of contributions related to OPEB on that very next page. And then following that, um, we go into some detailed information regarding pensions, also, uh, will eventually be 10-year schedules. We see on PDF 55, the proportionate share, the district's fraction of the overall statewide obligation related to both PERS and STIRS by year. Um, and then the, uh, schedule of contributions related to, uh, the, uh, the pension plans, both for CalPERS and CalSTRS. And then moving past the RSI, we get into the supplementary information, starting on PDF page 59. Um, that section begins with the district's organizational structure, um, and then goes into a handful of schedules required, uh, by both the federal government and by the chancellor's office. On PDF 60, uh, we see the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, um, where we can see the district is well over the $750,000 threshold, requiring a federal single audit. Um, on the very next page, a schedule of revenues and expenditures of state awards. Um, following that on PDF 62, we see a breakout, a detailed breakout of the district's FTES for fiscal '21. Um, had there been a required reconciliation, um, between the audited financials and the 311, that would be shown on page 63. That was not needed for the, uh, '21 fiscal year. And then on PDF 64, um, we see the, the breakout of the 50% law. And as you will notice, uh, at the very bottom of that page on PDF 64, the district is for fiscal '21 below the threshold required by law, required by the chancellor's office, um, at 41.97%. Uh, that will be one of the two comments noted as a compliance item in the current year. And I'll, I'll speak to that in greater detail when we get to the very last section of the report. And then, uh, moving past that, we see on, uh, PDF 66, uh, the reconciliation between the district's governmental funds and the government-wide statement of net position. And then finally, moving past the supplementary information section, we get to the other independent auditor's reports, of which there are three, and those are going to begin on PDF page 70. So on that page, the first of the three additional independent auditor's reports, uh, relates to our testing of internal controls and controls over compliance. This is where our procedures are geared, uh, to take a look at the district's control environment, perform a variety of tests in that area, and ultimately note if controls are properly in place over district activities. And I'm very pleased to report, uh, from fiscal '21, we note no exceptions in this area, no exceptions over the control environment. Uh, so an entirely clean report over controls and controls over compliance. Uh, moving past that to our federal testing on PDF 72, this was, um, a pretty hot-button area for fiscal '21, largely thanks to, uh, the very significant amount of compliance requirements that came not just through that traditional massive program, the student financial aid cluster, but also through the massive amount of money, uh, coming through HERF. And, uh, very pleased to report, based upon our testing over both programs, um, really one the cluster and the other the program, uh, we note no exceptions with respect to federal compliance for fiscal '21. So an entirely clean report over federal compliance for this year. And then finally, uh, on PDF 74, our independent auditor's report on state compliance. Uh, and state compliance, um, from a lot of perspectives, could be seen as one of the most challenging areas to maintain compliance with, simply because there's such breadth to what the district needs to keep track of in this area. Uh, just scrolling on to the next page of this report, PDF 75, we're required to list out all of the applicable procedures for fiscal '21 outlined in the updated chancellor's office CDan manual. And you can see from that, um, just the number of procedures under that procedures performed section, um, how many procedures the district is required to maintain compliance with, um, in order to receive an entirely clean opinion over state compliance. Um, we do note two exceptions to state compliance as findings 2021-001 and 2021-002. Um, and with those exceptions noted, uh, the district is otherwise, uh, per the results of our testing, in full compliance with the requirements of, uh, the, the chancellor's office and the CDan manual published for fiscal '21. And so moving past that final report, going into the schedule of findings and question costs, on PDF 77, uh, we see a summary of all the audit results for the year, um, which is kind of nice, because it's such a lengthy document. It's nice to have it all in one place. And so here we can see just that, we can see, uh, the results of the financial statement auditor, our testing on, uh, internal controls and controls over compliance, an entirely clean audit section. We see our testing over federal awards, as well as the detailing of specifically which, uh, major clusters and programs were tested for the year. Um, and so we see as a, a reoccurring cluster, the student financial aid, as well as the two aspects of CARESAC, both HERF, um, and the CRF funds. And then under state awards, uh, we see that while there are significant deficiencies noted, uh, there are none in the more, the more significant category, should we say, the material weakness category. We note no material weaknesses for the year. Um, and even with those two significant deficiencies, based on, uh, the relative significance of them, uh, we are still able to provide an unmodified opinion over state compliance. We did not deem them significant enough, uh, to qualify our state compliance opinion. And so moving past this summary, I'll speak to those comments in detail right now. Um, so moving on to PDF 78, we can see an entirely blank page, uh, for financial statement findings, as there were no findings over financial statement controls and controls over compliance. Uh, similarly, for federal awards, a blank page noted. And then going on to PDF page 80, uh, we see the first of those two current year exceptions noted as fiscal, as finding 2021-001, uh, the SCFF Data Management Control Environment comment. This was a reoccurring finding, uh, but a fairly common reoccurring finding for the year. Uh, primarily, this comment is looking at, um, not the controls over the data management control environment itself, uh, so much as the documentation of those controls. I want to emphasize that although this was a prior year comment, um, just to keep in mind, that prior year audit, uh, was not finalized until very recently, uh, really just some, you know, several months ago. And even though the district has made efforts, uh, to document this area, uh, since that time, this is an area that requires quite a bit of time, frankly, and, and that documentation was not complete as of this cutoff date. Uh, in speaking with district management, we do have confidence that, uh, the district will be able to make strides to complete this and resolve this comment, uh, prior to the close of fiscal '22. And so we'll keep a close eye on that, and we'll plan to provide a status update on that to the board, um, once we have that information at the close of this, uh, next fiscal year. And then moving past, um, finding 2021-001, onto the second of two findings, on PDF 81, uh, we had the salaries of classroom instructors, the 50% law comment. And this comment relates to that technical item of being below that 50% threshold with regard to, um, instructional costs versus non-instructional costs. Um, this is an area where essentially what we are required to do as the audit firm is test compliance of the 50% calculation by looking at the different categories that make it up. Um, but even though we determined that all categories underlying the 50% law, per the results of our testing, were correctly classified, the, the ratio itself, um, was too low to be within compliance. And as a result, we're, we're technically required to indicate this comment, um, for this year. The district provides, uh, a pretty in-depth response to this comment, explaining the situation, on PDF 82. And in that response, the district does note that not only is it well aware of this issue, um, which puts it out of compliance with this particular requirement, uh, but that it's already engaged in making efforts to, uh, move toward compliance, either in fiscal '22, um, or i- if not possible, by then fiscal '23. And that is the last of the two comments noted in the current year. Uh, there were several addition, additional comments noted in the prior year. And one thing we always like to do is provide the board with a status update on any prior year comments to give that context. Um, so I'm going to jump into those right now. On the very next page, PDF 83, uh, noted as finding 2020-001, uh, we noted a material weakness, which is the most significant finding possible, um, regarding the overall closing process. And like Doug mentioned right at the beginning, uh, this was really, really in line with the timing of that process, um, and really the failure, um, in the prior year in fiscal '20, for the district to be able to close out its financials, um, within a, a reasonable amount of time. There were many, uh, requests for extension, um, to the chancellor's office. Um, and ultimately, that year was not closed out until after the, the next fiscal year, um, well beyond the, the traditional or even an extended timeline. Um, very pleased to note that this comment is implemented for fiscal '21, as the district, uh, was able to timely finish and submit both the 311, as well as the audited financials, well in advance of, uh, both the ti- well, close to, but in advance of the traditional timeline, and more importantly, well in advance of the extended timeline. Uh, the fa- the next comment on PDF 84, finding 2020-002, pertains to our prior notation on the SCFF Data Management Control Environment. Um, this is the carryover finding that we just discussed. Um, this is, uh, regarding the controls, or rather, the documentation over the controls, uh, for the SCFF, uh, control environment, uh, that had not yet been put into place as of, uh, the end of this year, June 30, 21. Uh, the next comment on PDF 85, finding 2020-003, pertains to our prior year testing over, uh, the residency determination for credit courses, um, where we noted that there had been an exception, um, in a, a sub-portion of our residency sample. Pleased to report that, uh, we do not note that exception, uh, based on the results of our testing over residency for fiscal '21. So we are able to reflect that is implemented, uh, in the current year. The, uh, next page, PDF 86, um, indicates in finding 2020-004, uh, a comment over apprenticeship. Um, we noted that there was a discrepancy in the number of hours reported for, uh, apprenticeship in the prior fiscal year. Based on the results of our testing over apprenticeship in fiscal '21, uh, we note no such exception. Uh, so we are able to reflect that comment is implemented for fiscal '21. And finally, the last of five prior year exceptions noted on PDF 87, the very last page of the report, uh, as finding 2020-005. Uh, this comment really, uh, is right in line with the very first comment, uh, primarily pertaining to timeliness of the financial reporting. Uh, this, eh, this comment is in regard to the, uh, technical submission deadline, uh, to the chancellor's office of the, uh, 311 report, which, right along with the audited financials, came in well after, uh, that required submission date. Um, and as a result, we were required to note this as a comment in the prior year. Happily, uh, we observed that the 311 was timely submitted for fiscal '21, so we're able to similarly ref- reflect this is implemented, uh, in the current year. And I know that was extremely quick. Um, so with that, I want to open for any questions any member of the board may have on any aspect of this document or any of our procedures as performed for fiscal '21.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Jeff.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate you going through that, that quickly was helpful. I just, I have a que- question, kind of going through previous year's audits.
Yeah.
And looking at some of the recommendations that were made, eh, this, this, this particular and, and for the la- the last audit, and, and trying to reconcile, I guess, have none of those rec- nothing's changed at the college. And I, I, I believe CWL, you guys have done our audits for at least as long as I've been on the board, which is, uh, 2018, but I think, you know, before that, before my time was there. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how come CD, CWDL is making these recommendations now and didn't make these recommendations in the past?
In reference to the five, uh, comments in the prior year report?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think that's just one, one example. I mean, for, in terms of policies and, and putting together fiscal policies, um, so that, that's what I'm just trying to reconcile now, is, you know, where did that come from? I know it's something that I think Doug has, has really been helpful in, in, and, and bringing to, um, the, you know, the board, the board's side, in terms of addressing some of these issues in the future. But I'm just curious how come CWDL didn't really catch these issues, uh, earlier on and didn't make these recommendations earlier on?
Well, I, I'd like to jump in if I could, Ben. You know, it, you know, generally, you know, very early on in, in the audit report, it is mentioned that, you know, the financials that are being presented are the responsibility of the district. And there is a certain amount of reliance upon the judgment of the district with regard with regards to the reporting of certain aspects. And with regards to the fifty percent law, the, you know, the overall numbers were correct. The real question became on that one report, just how it was reported. And as I explained in the, in our response, generally, you know, depending on what kind of time you have, sometimes when you have adjustments that need to be made, you can either make them through the system, which is very timely or very time-consuming, or you can do them kind of off-books and you'll get to them eventually. I think the problem we had is that some of those adjustments that got us into compliance with the fifty percent law in the past, how that was done was never documented, at least, you know, that I could find. And I took a very strict account code determination with regards to our reporting. And since that time, I've found that one of the problems that we do have is a tendency to not use the correct account codes. We use convenient account codes, account codes that we currently have, and think that later on, we will make the fix, which is one of the reasons that has led us to not closing, you know, the books on time. And we're changing, we're changing that. The folks in the accounting department are taking a, you know, very strong look at how we are recording things, you know, for program managers who, you know, are overseeing some of our categorical programs. It's like, and why aren't they not being paid by those categorical programs? They're being paid from the unrestricted fund. So, and, but, you know, but that's a determination made by the district, you know, and it's not the auditor's, you know, position to say whether or not that's right or wrong. They're there to look at, you know, are we following our own practices, you know, to the best, you know, to GASB standards and to the standards of the, you know, the contracted district accounting manual? And if we choose to do things wrong, well, that's not, that's not something that they would necessarily see. But that is something that we are correcting, and they have been a big help in helping identify some of the areas that perhaps we need to look at.
And Doug, thanks, Ed. And I think that actually, you circled it back to on your closing comment there is kind of, I guess, what I'm getting to right now is, you know, I think how can we work a little bit better, I think, with our auditor and identifying some of these issues? And, you know, maybe when there isn't the best reporting and consistent with GASP practices and not following those protocols. And just, I'm just trying to maybe get a sense from Ben about anything that maybe we think that on their end, that they could have done better and, you know, addressing these issues. But Doug, I totally agree with you, you know, it comes down to us providing the right information. So certainly, the buck stops there.
And I have kind of a follow-up question along the same lines regarding both the fifty percent issue and also our reserves, because both of those things changed quite a bit in the last eighteen months, at least on paper. And so I'm trying to figure out, it sounds like what you're saying. I understand, you know, the reporting and the coding and it not being done properly for, my assumption had been that that was largely to do with purchasing. Is that also reflected in things like payroll? Like people not being paid out of the correct code? Because that's where I'm thinking, like with the fifty percent part, I'm surprised that we went from fifty, you know, we were always kind of right on the edge based on the reporting we were receiving. But to go from fifty percent to barely forty-two is pretty significant. Is that, is that, is the same errors that were, that were, are reflected in that as well?
And if I may, yes, it is, is subsequent to, you know, doing the CCFS three eleven report and the closing of books so that we could get the audit done in time. As, as the accounting department is looking at some of our expenditures, we are finding that there is miscoding that has affected our ability to meet the fifty percent law. A couple of items are specifically mentioned in the district's response. One of them is how we've been coding the ongoing perpetual licensing for our IT system. That should be an expenditure that is not included in the denominator of the fifty percent law. But for years, it has been, and this is one of the problems. We also have found at least a couple, but we're now going to look at it very specifically with the number of program managers over our categorical programs who are not being expensed out of that categorical program, out of Fund twelve. So therefore, they, their salaries, because they are not coded, you know, appropriately, appropriately to the work that they are doing, also has effect on our fifty percent law. And I think I make mention of that about a third of the shortfall that we've had in twenty-twenty-one has been due to these miscodings. And I would like to say that, you know, we have found all of them. But I think now that we are aware of what some of the problems are, we are just now beginning to really dig in and find out where some of these issues are and are going to affect the corrections, which you will be able to see for twenty-one, twenty-two. Now, with regards to the fifty, or the fund balance, when the CCFS three eleven was done for nineteen-twenty, it was done well prior to the closing of the books. And there were a couple of adjustments that were made that in the three eleven that improved the fund balance. But after we've discovered what some of those, you know, quote-unquote corrections were for, and realized that, well, they were really erroneous corrections or estimates, it certainly changed the fund balance by about a full three percent.
Any other questions regarding the audit?
Trustee Baldini has this, Andrew.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Can you cover the possible penalties associated with the not meeting the fifty percent rule?
Yes, I can. The, although I don't have the legal language directly in front of me, the penalty, if you will, is that the chancellor's office has the wherewithal to withhold apportionment funding from the district that it would otherwise receive to then be utilized to increasing the, in the amounts of money that are being distributed for classroom instructional salaries. For our district, because we are a community-supported district, we are only receiving apportionment funding for, I think, the twenty-fifteen, sixteen full-time faculty hiring amount, which is about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So the state chancellor's office could potentially withhold that amount of money from us. Or I should say, the money would come to the county treasury, but those monies would only be allowed to be released to us for our use, to be used towards increasing instructional salaries. But as a percentage of the district's overall revenues, that's less than one percent.
Thanks very much, Doug. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Home of approval.
I will second.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
Do we have hard copies at the campus that we can get? I have them from every other year, so despite all the chaos this year, I think I still want to have this one, hard copy.
I'm sure we could get one.
I think we're working with Ben and Catherine with regards to just how many hard copies we'll get. But I think, Kyle, if you want one, we'll make sure you get one.
You have a prayer?
You know, they're helpful.
You want the fancy binding? Fair enough. Jeff, you have a question?
Yeah, just one last question. And Doug, this is probably just for you. And it's on PDF page twenty-eight. And it just talks about a principle that you had mentioned earlier about when you have restricted and unrestricted resources, middle of the page, in the closing comment, when both restricted and unrestricted resources are available for use, it's district's practice. You went too far.
Sorry, there it is.
It's a district practice to use restricted resources first, yada, yada, yada. Now, we don't have that in actually embedded in any of our fiscal policies in terms of budget management, right? That's just a management, then just to confirm that piece right there. And then two, would it be appropriate to actually codify, I guess, that practice in our financial policies?
Yes. I would, I would say that, and I'm speaking totally off the cuff here, just my experience. One of the things that ACCJC and FICMAT look at is to make sure that the district is maintaining its ongoing expenditures within its ongoing revenues. And because the categorical programs are, you know, those are restricted monies and it's pretty states, say it's pretty clearly how that money can be spent. And you can only recognize the revenue to the extent of your expenditures. If we make sure that we account for things correctly, which is one of the things that we are working on as diligently as we can since I've arrived, that will help us make sure that we spend things in the correct place. But it's always been my philosophy that you want to, you want to leave your most discretionary funds to the end, because you can always use discretionary funds to backfill restricted monies if there's a shortfall. But you cannot use restricted monies to backfill expenditures in an area for which those restricted monies cannot be used.
Thank you.
And yes, I would love to see some of this codified or at least put into a document. And I do know that the folks on the Planning and Budget Committee have a lot of desire to set things in a way that makes sure that our finances are managed to the best that we can.
And that's noted here in the audit, as well as from FICMAT and ACCJC and the Accreditation Steering Committee and pretty much everybody, I think, is in agreement that that needs to be done, yes. All right, then. So we have a motion and we have a second. It was, I think it was trustee Baldini moved and Kyle, trustee Iverson seconded. So trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson? Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soro Gonzalez?
Aye.
And then I will also vote aye. So we have our audit report turned in on time. Thank you ever so much, everyone, for pulling out all the extra hours over the holiday especially and getting this done so we can get our business cleaned up a little bit here. So I don't think we have any other items. And so our next meeting is going to be January eighteenth, which is a Tuesday, don't forget that. And enjoy the rest of your holiday. See you next year.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Bye, we're joined at five sixteen PM.